Hey, hi, everybody. Welcome to our November Town Hall for the Girl Scouts of Suffolk County. We have a lot of great, exciting panelists with you, with us today that are going to share some new information. If you have any questions, please post them. You can either post them in the chat or you could put, we have a Q and A feature because this is going to be a webinar. So you'll be able to put your questions there and you can either pose them to a specific panelist or just on the whole, and then we will address them that way. We have a few people to join us today and I'll just give you a brief like rundown of the agenda. We're going to start with some of our partners from Northwell Health. And then we're going to talk about programs. Kelly's going to update us with product sales. I have a little video to show you for the shop. And then Jackie is going to, from membership is going to be here. And she's going to introduce you to one of our newest employees, Nicole. And then we have a presentation by Laura Sorjy from Service Unit 48 that we'll have. And then just some holiday light show video and information. And then if you posted a question to us beforehand, we're going to address all of the Q and As at the end. So if we're going to get started, Sarah, who is first? I'm sorry.
Megan Downey is first.
Would you like me to go ahead and get started?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Megan, I'm trying to pull up your bio information. Can you just let us know on some brief, a brief description of where you're from? And, and some of the great things you're going to speak with us to today?
Sure thing. My name's Dr. Megan Downey. I'm a clinical psychologist and the program manager for On Track New York at South Oaks Hospital, part of Northwell Health. On Track New York is an innovative program that specializes in the treatment of first episode psychosis in our young adult population. This evening, though, I'm here to speak with you about anxiety in teens, what to know and what to do. I have a brief slideshow prepared, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And this swips can see my slides. How's that? Can we see that all right?
Yes, good.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. So just want to thank you again for having me here today. I'm really excited about the opportunity to speak at this town hall meeting. I am a former Girl Scout myself, so it's nice to come full circle in that way. So what is anxiety? And anxiety is a feeling of worry, nervousness, or unease typically about an anticipated event or something with an uncertain outcome. Takeaway points that I want you to know. Anxiety is the most common mental illness in the United States. It's either acute or chronic, meaning it can happen really quickly in the form of panic or it can happen over time for a long period of time, like generalized anxiety. Anxiety can affect all parts of us, our thoughts, behaviors, and bodies. I know we have a really short time together, so I wanted to spend most of my time kind of providing tips, tricks, and strategies for what you can do at home with your teen to mitigate anxiety. So what you have in front of you here is a problem solving worksheet. And this is a worksheet where your teen can do either independently or collaboratively. And the idea here is that they can dissect the situation that's contributing to their anxiety and explore and evaluate alternative solutions to mitigate their anxiety. And if this worksheet is something that you're interested or would like to see more of, I'm happy to make my slide deck available for folks to access after this webinar. The next skill that we're going to go over together is something called grounding exercises. So this particular technique is called the five senses technique. And I really enjoy this one because this is a technique that you can use anytime and anywhere. So the idea when you're doing a grounding exercise is it takes your mind off of whatever it is that you're anxious about and gets you focused onto neutral content back in the present moment. So if you want to take a moment to do this at home, or we can even do it together. Again, this one's the five senses activity. Look around and name five things I can see. I can see my plant, my water, my glasses case, my laptop, my cellphone. Four things I can feel, I can feel my glasses on my face, my ring on my finger, my feet on the ground, and my back on the chair. Three things I can hear. I can hear my dog breathing. I can hear the hum of my laptop and perhaps a car outside. Two things I can smell, that's easy, dinner and a candle. And one thing I can taste, lemon from my cell phone, sir. Okay. Okay, the next skill that we're going to speak about is mindfulness. And I'll just briefly read this quote for you by Jim Carrey. "If you aren't in the moment, you're either looking forward to uncertainty or back to pain and regret." John Kabat-Zinn defined mindfulness as paying attention in a particular way on purpose to the present moment and without judgment. So the image that's depicted in front of you is a person walking with their dog, right? As you can see, the person has a really crowded, clouded mind where that dog is just present in the moment. The difference between mindfulness and having a full mind. So mindfulness is a strategy in coping with anxiety by taking ourselves out of the, out of our anxious minds and into the present moment. But it's also a tool that allows us to realize when we're experiencing anxiety. So we can try to, try to do something about it, not get rid of it, but try to do something about it. So practicing mindfulness allows us to label our experiences without judgment and, and to also have more, more compassion for ourselves. Another takeaway strategy to manage anxiety is acceptance. By accepting our anxious thoughts and feelings, we surrender fighting them or feeling guilty for them. So next time when you or your team are overwhelmed with anxiety, you can advise your teen to try distancing themselves from their anxiety by allowing themselves to simply notice it. And this might look like inviting your teen to say, I'm feeling anxious right now because of blank. And that's okay. So once you notice your anxious thought, you reduce the power it has over you. If we're looking at the image on the screen, you'll notice the, the rain cloud on the left. And this is what anxiety looks like as it pertains to rain. I don't like the rain. I wish it was raining. Now my hair's frizzy. I'm going to get wet socks. I'm going to have to sit with wet socks all day. It's going to be awful all because it's raining. Why can't it just be sunny? And on the right, this is what that rain cloud looks like as it, as it, as it is an acceptance. It's raining. Yeah, I don't like it, but that's okay. And the next technique we're going to go over together is a deep breathing technique. This one's called square breathing. But in, or in order to do square breathing, first I want to invite folks to differentiate between shallow breathing and deep breathing. And to simply do that, you take two hands, you put one on your chest and then you put the other one on your lower abdomen. And you inhale through your nose and exhale through your mouth. You'll notice if that top hand is the one that's moving in and out, that's going to be an indication of shallow breathing. You can actually feel the air just traveling to that top portion of the lung. And if you take a deep breath and you notice your bottom hand is moving, that's going to be an indication of deep breathing where you'll actually feel the air traveling to the depth of the lung. Now you can do this form of deep breathing alone as it is, or you could do this activity called square breathing. And square breathing is basically inhaling for four seconds, holding for four seconds, exhaling for four seconds, and holding for four seconds, all while visualing, visualizing a square. Now, some research points to visualizing a blue or, or a yellow square to have an additional calming effect. But if you'd like, we can, this is one we can try together as well. So you might even want to put two hands, one on the chest and one on the abdomen to ensure your deep breathing. But inhale, one, two, three, four. Hold, two, three, four. Exhale, two, three, four. Hold, two, three, four. And you can do that as many or as little times as it takes to move back into a calm or relaxed state. I have a few more tips and tricks. The next one we're going to go over is challenging negative thoughts. So sometimes we don't initially recognize our thoughts as our anxious thoughts as irrational. So challenging our thinking patterns can help change them. So you might encourage yourself or your teen when thinking irrationally to come up with substantial evidence to support their thoughts, like asking, what makes you think that? Do you have any evidence to support your thinking? And then invite them to identify evidence contrary to their, to their thinking. You can even invite them to describe what their friend might think of the situation or if their friend was experiencing the same thing that they were, what advice might they give their friend? Then you can invite your teen to try and look at the situation positively to see if that would change the outcome. And lastly, one strategy that tends to be helpful is inviting your teen to think, will this event really matter a year from now? What about five years from now, 10 years from now? Sometimes when we're able to zoom out a little bit out of our experience, out of our current experiences, we could see that whatever it is that we're really stressing about might not be that important in the grand scheme of things. This idea of challenging negative thoughts, it's a common practice in something called cognitive behavioral therapy. And the idea is, is that negative thoughts prevent us from really enjoying our experiences. They distract us from what's focused, from focusing on what's important and they drain our energy. So being able to challenge negative thoughts allows us to feel better because we're able to respond to stress in a more helpful way. The next strategy I wanted to talk about was self-soothing skills. So this one here engages all five senses. And many people like creating a self-soothing box where they can easily access items that bring them immediate comfort and move them right out of an anxious space. So for example, imagine you have a box that's full of different things that will immediately bring you soothing or grounding. Something to touch. So for some folks, this could be a favorite scarf or a beanie or even a stress ball. Something to hear, maybe it's a visual reminder of a meditation guide or a favorite playlist. You might have your team put a visual reminder of their favorite artist. Something to see, whatever visualization brings them joy. Maybe it's happy pictures, maybe it's a favorite crystal. Something to taste, maybe it's mint sour candy or gum. And something to smell. This could be something like a candle, a perfume, a lavender essential oil, for example. And, and remember, all these things don't necessarily have to be in a box. They can be all engaged individually, but having them all in one space often gives folks an opportunity to easily access support just as a first aid kit might. And the last skill that I'm going to go over with folks is time management. So often we feel anxious because our to-do list is longer than the amount of hours in a day. So one idea in improving time management is to write things down. So writing things down not only helps folks not forget things, but it also allows us to drop that, that rotating mental checklist that we have. Plus, a lot of individuals report that they really enjoy kind of marking off their accomplishments during the day. Prioritizing our tasks, completing the quickest and the most important tasks first. Compartmentalization is next, breaking large tasks into smaller pieces. So often when we break a large task into smaller pieces, that, that task becomes more manageable, becomes more approachable. Limiting distractions, maybe cutting out the distractions that you don't actually enjoy and finding more space for the ones that you do. And if you can't limit your distractions, get away from them, like television, like radio. Give yourself time between tasks. Tests often run longer than we anticipate. So giving ourselves that extra buffer between tasks helps us actually have space to get them done. And lastly, letting ourselves be less than perfect. When we strive for perfection on every task, often our responsibilities don't get done and our anxiety increases. So that was really a quick run-through of some tips, tricks, and strategies to mitigate anxiety. I did want to leave folks with some resources. I want to highlight our Child and Adolescent Program, also known as the Comprehensive Outpatient Behavioral Services, or COBSS program. This is a program with many excellent clinicians and psychiatrists who could offer support on an outpatient basis. I think that was all I had for folks today. Hope that this was helpful. And again, I'm, I'm really glad, I'm really glad to have been a part of this meeting today.
All right, thank you. That, thank you to Dr. Megan Downey. And we also have Catherine Blotio from the, is, who is a project manager from the Katz Institute for Women's Health in the Northwell Health System Center for Equity of Care, providing educational programming for our community of women. Catherine also serves as the Nassau County Safe Kids Coordinator for the past 15 years. She's a master health educator and is certified as an American Heart Association Basic Life Support Instructor, serving as regional and training center faculty. So next up is Catherine. Thank you.
Oh, you're on mute, Catherine.
Well, that would help. Thank you. As you said, I am, good evening, everybody, and thank you. I'm Kathy Blotio from the Katz Institute for Women's Health. At the Katz Institute, we know that women's health needs are unique. And I would like to thank the Girl Scouts and Sarah Moffett for inviting me here tonight. I'm very happy to share just a little bit about the Katz Institute with you. Our goal is to promote women's health and wellness throughout a woman's lifetime through comprehensive clinical services, health education, and partnerships with you and other women in our community. Should you need clinical care, we want to help you navigate the health system and share our resources so you get the best possible outcome. Before I turn the program back over to the Girl Scouts, I did promise to be short, but I do have a very brief New York Minute video that will give you an overview of our resources. So if you just bear with me, I'm going to share my screen and show the video. And I'm going to actually turn off my video. Yeah, I'm going to put this back. I'm going to turn off my video because sometimes with the videos playing a video, it, I don't know, it taxes the system. So if anybody else wants to, just for a second. So optimizing. And okay, can you all see it?
Yes, we can.
Okay. And let me know if you can hear. All right. So I, I hope you could hear it okay. And I'll come back on so you can see me. I hope it played all right. It always plays well when you're playing it on this side, but I don't know what happens on the other side. So thank you very much and wonderful to see everybody.
Thank you so much for joining us. So next up, we're going to have Sarah Moffett, who is the Director of Programs in KI.
Okay, hi, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you again to Kathy and Megan. The Katz Foundation and Northwell have been such great partners to us. They, we have a free patch program with them where girls can go, probably not right now, but can go and learn some basic first aid. Kathy from the Katz Foundation has given us a number of resources for leaders and moms. So we really appreciate it and it's just been such a nice partnership for us. Onto some program news. We will be continuing our virtual programs online. We just finished, this week will be a series of journey programs for all levels. We do have our Health and Wellness Initiative that's kicked off. We have Self-Care Sundays, which is a social media plan for us. So every Sunday, there is something that girls can do on their own or with their families to show a little self-care. And we've asked that girls or moms send us photos or tag us in their photos of what they're doing to do self-care. It doesn't have to be in a timely fashion. If you're backed up from self-care three weeks ago, we still want your photos. We still want you to be part of it, but we want you to show us your self-care. Shortly, we are going to have on the website a listing of resources for both girls and moms for health and wellness. So girls, there's a mixture of badge programs that they can do, virtual activities and articles. And moms, it's mostly articles and resources that you can access just to do with stress, health, relationships, you know, dealing with your daughter, what they're going through. And again, another part of our initiative is having special guests like Kathy and Megan each month that have something to do with, you know, taking care of yourself, your relationship with your daughter, you know, just any way that we can support you. And we also would love any ideas that you have on how we can increase that initiative, if there's something we're missing. But there will be, like I said, those online resources. All of our virtual programs for December will be focused on self-care. So I do have a listing of a couple of those. Let me just grab. Okay. So Hanora, who is our program specialist, she spoke last month and introduced herself. So her entire month of December is going to be dedicated to these programs for girls. There's Cadet Self-Care Crafting, Junior Winter Wellness, Senior Self-Care, Daisy Creating Calmness. I think we could agree, all the daisies need creating calmness. Ambassador Relax and Create, Brownie Calm Creations, Cadet Mindfulness Movement, Junior Vibe and Flow, Senior Serenity, Daisy Bloom Bliss, Ambassador Tranquility, and Brownie, Brownie Namaste and Relax. I will tell you that our CEO Pamela Mastroda is actually going to be leading yoga sessions in some of these programs. So you have to stay tuned for that because she is going to be doing it. And just a final update, our Hall of Trees is full. We did have leaders and moms drop off trees beginning yesterday. Our Camping Services Director was very sad because it's not the normal for us. Normally, we have troops come all together with the parents and moms. We do have chocolate and cookies. We play Christmas music. And she said it was pretty emotional just seeing, you know, just the moms come in, quick set up the tree and leave. And obviously it was a reduced capacity because we can't even have that many people in the building. But just to say that we're so proud of the troops for still doing it and still dedicating their time and energy and giving to other organizations. And these organizations are so grateful and so thankful. So, you know, we're still pushing along the best we know how. And it's really a credit to our leaders and parents and girls that they still are willing to participate and excited to do so. So that's it for me. And any questions, please submit to the block. Thank you.
Okay, so Kelly is up next.
Good evening, everybody. It's so nice to see, you know, well, it's not see, but be here and talk to you about the full program. The full program is just about over. I just have to say, being in a pandemic, nothing stops you guys because this sale has gone fantastic. There's nothing I could say, but thank you and I really appreciate it. This will be the last weekend of standabouts. So if you're interested in doing a standabout, you need to pick it up by Thursday. And the last day to return or pick up anything from the cupboard is next Tuesday, 11:24. So keep that in mind. So if you have something out that needs to come back, we need it back by the 24th, okay? Before you come down to the cupboard, be sure to reserve your time slot. It really just keeps the flow going, you know, so there's not that backup, backup of people, you know, so we can keep the social distance going. Once the sale is over, I'm hoping to get rebates out to the troops for all the troops that are paid in full the last week in November, beginning December, that, that week that kind of overlaps. So just make sure that everybody's paying their bill. You could pay it online at the pay troop bill feature. And if you are in need of a deposit slip, just shoot me an email and we'll get them out to you this week. Anybody who's picked up any ketchup orders, just make sure that you're allocating them to the girls. The directions on how to do this is on page 10 of your guidebook. It is also located on our website. So if you need any help with it, just let me or Melinda know and we'll be happy to help you with that. Just looking at my notes real quick, that has to be done by December 1st. So please make sure you get that done so that way the girls get the correct rewards. I hate for them not to get what they, they had their heart set out on. So that's pretty much it for fall, but I just wanted to give a little tidbit for Cookie Rookie. Cookies will be starting mid-December. So we're starting to book our Cookie Rookie trainings for all our troop leaders, new and old. Whoever wants to attend, just for a refresher, or you're brand new. They will be December 7th at 10:00 AM, I'm sorry, December 7th at 6:00 PM and December 10th at 10:00 AM. You can find all the information on Facebook or on our website. There's a link to sign up. It'll be virtual. It'll also be recorded so that way everybody can enjoy it all they want. If they want to, you know, on a Saturday night, just re-watch it, you know, I'd be happy with that. So you could do that too. And I think that is it for me. I just had, we did have one person, we had two questions come in that earlier on that had to do with product sales. One was someone asking about how to pick up a ketchup order. I did respond to them individually, but you would, like I said earlier, just need to reserve a time slot. You could do that on our website by looking up ketchups and clicking on the button for make a reservation. And the other question was about opting out as an independent. In the past, opting out is, is featured for cadets and up because they're usually working on projects or awards. But it also was a troop, it was like a troop feature. It wasn't an independent girl feature. I'm more than happy to get these girls if they're working on projects, the extra nickel per box. So if you, if you feel that you're an independent and you really want that extra opting out option as a cadet or older, just email me and I'll be happy to get that done for you. And, you know, I'm, I think I've pretty much done that in the past, but if anybody needs help with that in the future, we're more than happy to help you with that. Okay, I think that's it for me.
Kelly, we just had a question in the chat that it just said she requested a pickup, but there was nowhere. that it just said she requested a pickup, but there was nowhere to specify a time. Does she just come at any time during the day she selected?
Maureen, I'm going to email you. There, one of this, one of the forms was a little off with the time, but as long as you could come down during cupboard hours, that should be fine. If you put your reservation in, we'll have it ready for you and we'll get you in and out. So just come down during slotted times for cupboard. The form is fixed now, so that way everything is working properly now.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so real quick, I'm just gonna show you a little video for the holiday gifts that we're creating for the shop this year. So still, we are still operating curbside only for the shop. So you would have to, there's different ways that you can place your order. You can click on our website and then go to shop on the top. And then you'll be able to see a downloadable form that you can fill out and then email to Anne and Maria. You can also call. And if you know, if you know, you just want a couple of things, you can place, you can call and place your order that way. You can also use our Shopify site. So there's a link right on the shop page of the website where you can click on that and place your order online. We're still on, you know, modified schedule as far as working. So we're on like an A and B schedule. So there are days when we're in the council location and then there are days that we're not. All of the inventory is being manned from the Comac location. So Anne and Maria are delivering the products to Edian Riverhead on the days that they have pickup. And sometimes if people aren't able to come for the curbside time, we're able to arrange deliveries to your house. So if you have an order that you'd like to place and you have any questions, you can check out our website and send the emails that way. Because we're really trying to do anything we can to get you what you need to help the girls for this year. So that information is there, but I do want to share, we just finished the video about very, very quickly. So I'm gonna, let me just share my screen and I'll show you.
I just want to say while you're doing that, we just got a shout out to Anne and Maria in the shop and said that they are so accommodating and so awesome. So I just wanted to, yes.
I'm going to see if I can just share that. Hold on. Okay, so just to recap, we're going to post that video on our website and on our social media. But they've made like mini gift sets that you can just add for your troop. So we tried to keep them value-priced, $3, $5. So you can get them for your entire troop if you wanted. We also have some ornaments from the Girl Scout Shop that say Girl Scouts of Suffolk County on them. And then we've had some ornaments left over from prior holidays that are now on a really great clearance prices. So those are available as well. There's limited quantity on them. So if you know what you want, you can email us right away. We'll have them on the Shopify site by the end of the week. So if you have any questions, please let us know. And that's pretty much it for the shop. Any, I don't see any questions just yet. So we're gonna go move on to Jackie.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight at our second town hall meeting. I'm happy to be here with you all. I just have a few things I want to go over and I have some people to introduce to you tonight. So first, I just want to remind everybody that we have moved to indoor meetings. At this point, we are allowing up to 26 participants at those meetings. You do not need an indoor meeting form unless you plan to meet on council properties. And if you do, then you can go to our website, www.gssc.us. And you can click on that form, fill it out, and then one of our staff people will get back to you to schedule that meeting for you. We are still not allowing trips at this point. The safety of, and health and safety of our girls are really at the utmost right now. We know things are starting to look like they're increasing. So we're trying to do the best we can to keep everybody safe. So please continue to check our website, the COVID update spot on our website, which is right on the front page. In case anything happens to change, we know that things are rapidly changing all around the country, in the state, even in the county. So please make sure you're checking that website. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to myself, our membership specialist, or anybody in the council offices, and we'd be happy to answer your questions. We have our gift card weekly initiative that has been going on, which is super excited. I hope you've all seen the videos of our winners. Our staff is trying to outdo themselves with how fun they can make their videos and they've done an excellent job. So if you haven't re-registered yet, or you don't know anybody who's re-registered, let them know. Or anybody who would like to join Girl Scouts, that weekly, we're giving away a $75 gift card to anybody who registers within that week. And if you have any questions, please let me know. And if you've already registered, you're also already in that raffle, so you could be chosen as well. So you don't have to just re-register now. You could have re-registered on time for that. We have a new texting initiative. Moving with this beat of sound, Girl Scouts has stepped into kind of the 21st century or maybe more. And you may be receiving a text message from us. We know that a lot of people are busy right now. You have a lot of things happening between hybrid school and working from home and just trying to keep our lives and everybody safe. So we may be sending out some text messages to give you some updates on things happening at the council. Could be membership-based. It could be about our wonderful programs, great sales in the shop, or some amazing product sales information. So please look for that, those as well. And if for some reason you're not receiving texts from us and you would like to, you could email customercare@gssc.us and we can definitely make sure that we get you on our list. So the next I'd like to talk about is we're having our new leader happy hour on December 3rd at 7 o'clock. It will be a Zoom. So we're excited to join our new leaders. So if you are a new leader, if you know a new leader, or if you'd like to be a new leader, you can join us on December 3rd at 7 o'clock for a virtual happy hour. We'll just kind of discussing Girl Scout things, welcoming each other and you get to meet new people and kind of just have a great night with some new friends. So if you have any questions, also you can email customercare@gssc.us and we'll be happy to answer those questions. And right now, I'd like to introduce, very excited to introduce, our new Development and Training Manager. Her name is Nicole Wolfreth and she's on with us tonight and she just wants to introduce herself.
Thanks, Jackie. Hi, everyone. My name is Nicole Wolfreth. Really excited to be part of Girl Scouts of Suffolk County. I have a background, just to let tell you a little bit about myself, I have a background in leadership and development training in the higher education sector with colleges and universities as well as nonprofit. And what's most important is that I've got two girls in Girl Scouts. One's a junior, one's a daisy. I'm a daisy troop leader. And I'm a former Girl Scout. So I am super excited to be part of the movement and to be working with all of you. And to tell you a little bit about where we're going with training, we are going to be in the next couple of weeks building up our resources to give you the tools that you need as some of you are leaders to pivot to virtual meetings if you need to, and also to navigate the new CDC guidelines. So you'll be seeing a lot of resources on our website coming up. And moving forward in training as a whole, what we are looking to do is expand our training to offer you still some of the great workshops that we have, but to expand on some of the areas in which we feel that leaders may need some extra assistance in making sure that you have the most fun as a leader. And that's where the most important part is that you are going to be giving us feedback. So you are going to start to see a lot of communication from me through email, through social media, trying to solicit your feedback. I'd love to know things that you'd like to see in training. And I'd also like to know some wonderful things that you're doing so that we could try to showcase that in our training, either through maybe a special parent in your group that has something important to share, or one of your girls that's doing something amazing. So sharing best practices as part of training is also a really important direction that we want to take everything in. And we are also going to be trying to deliver these trainings, both virtually and in person when we can, so that we can accommodate all learners and all ways in which our lives have now changed due to COVID. So again, always want to hear from you moving forward. I'm going to be putting my name and contact information in the chat. So please feel free to reach out to me. And I'm just excited to be here. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Nicole. We're excited to have you. And now I'd like to introduce one of my very favorite volunteers, Laura Sorji. She is a current and former Service Unit Coordinator on Service Unit 48, which is the Mystic Shirley area, Mystic Beach area. And she's just going to talk a little bit about her service units' amazing virtual events and how they've been able to keep their girls and their volunteers engaged during this time of COVID. Thank you, Laura.
And I have, I'm gonna share my screen, Laura, so you can see, so we can see the photos that she has from her service unit. So just hold on one sec.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm happy to represent Service Unit 48. And big thank you to Jenna because I am the least text savvy person there is. And when they invited me here and they said, oh, you can share your screen and all this fun stuff. And I said, I can't do it. So Jenna's saving the day. Thank you, Jenna. When we first had the shutdown back in March, we just really thought it was going to be a few week thing. So we, we said, all right, well, let's do some fun stuff, get the girls engaged. Let's come up with some challenges so they know we're still thinking about them. So the first thing that we came up with was around Easter time. We put a nailed-it challenge out to the girls. So we showed them a picture of professionally made bunny cake and some bunny houses. And then we challenged them to make their version of it. So you can see on the screen some of our, our Girl Scouts with their creations of their bunny cakes. Prior to that, we did a few of the other ones too. We did the chalky walk and all that stuff. But then we, we really decided to step it up a notch and we did the nailed-it challenge. Then we did a she and me twinning challenge near Mother's Day where the girls were challenged to become their mom's twin or their special she. After that, the next one we wanted to talk about was around Memorial Day, our local American Legion Hall. We made patriotic rocks and we filled their garden with all the different rocks. And the girls put messages on the rocks for the veterans. This was one of our favorite ones. We did a glow stick dance challenge. So we challenged our troops to have the girls design outfits made out of glow sticks and create a dance to go with it. During the month of October, instead of doing a weekly challenge, we did a daily challenge. So for the entire month of October, we taught the girls trivia about the life of Juliette Low in honor of her birthday month. So we, we did a STEM challenge here that they're showing the pictures of where the girls had to build structures out of pumpkin candies and toothpicks. We also had a Think Pink one, this one here. We told the girls about how Juliette Low would stand on her head every year on her birthday so that she can show the girls that she's still, she was still young, just like them. There's a picture here. You can see Juliette Low. And then we challenged our girls to do the same with their headstands. And then to close out her birthday month, we had one of our leaders, she is a professional pastry chef. So she hosted a Zoom. And the girls learned how to make homemade icing and she taught them the proper way to ice a cake. And they all made birthday cakes for Juliette Low. And we included with that package a little birthday bag. So you can see some of our girls with their party hats on and their, their party blowers and they're wishing Juliette Low a happy birthday for Halloween because we couldn't all be together. We normally, our service unit would normally have a big Halloween celebration. So this year, we did boo bags. And the girls all signed up for, if they wanted to have their, the moms would sign their daughter up if they wanted to boo them. So we stuffed the bag with all kinds of Halloween treats. And then we drove around the neighborhood and we left the surprises on their porch. So when the girls came out on the way to school or coming home from school, they would be surprised by the, the bag on their porch. And that was a lot of fun. This one was great. And you can tie this program into all the Democracy badges. One of our Girl Scout junior leaders, she came up with this idea and, and we loved it so much that we asked her if she would mind if we did it for the whole service unit. And the girls had to nominate a candidate candy, their favorite candy. And we had the chocolate party and the sugar party. And the girls made posters and they made videos and they campaigned for their favorite candy. And we held an election towards the end. And we have Reese's Peanut Butter Cup is our winner for president this year. And Kit Kat is the new town councilwoman. And M&amp;M's is the vice president. So it was a landslide chocolate party winning for our election this year. And we just love that idea. That was Kim Sewicki from Troop 1713. Great idea she shared with all of us. This next event, one of our senior leaders hosted it, Irma. And the girls made armpit fudge and had an, made homemade ice cream to go along with it. It's perfect for a Zoom meeting. The girls, she gave them ahead of time what their ingredients would be that they would need for this. All done in Ziploc bags. And so first, they would make the fudge. They put all the ingredients in their Ziploc bag. And the way to mix it, put it under your arm and mix it up. And the girls thought that was hysterical. And then while that was freezing, they went on to make their ice cream. So it was perfect timing. One hour Zoom meeting. It's so much fun. If anybody's interested, we can certainly share the, the recipe for you. We wanted to continue our tradition of our Thanksgiving food drive. But unfortunately, this year, we weren't able to stand out in front of the stores. So we asked the girls to create posters and make videos that we can share on social media. And then we set up several drop boxes around the community. And they did, they did great. We were able to help our local pantry make all their boxes for Thanksgiving. And we're really proud of how hard the girls worked. So when they put their mind to it, we can still accomplish things virtually. This we just did last weekend. Our troop and our sister troop have a tradition that we host a Friendsgiving every year and we get together. And this year we wanted, our dream was to do it for the whole service unit and then unfortunately with COVID, we were unable to be together. So we said, well, how are we going to still make this happen? So what we did was we had all the meals prepared. One of the dads in my troop owns a bagel store. He was happy to cook up the turkeys and help us prep. And we had seventy Girl Scouts share a Friendsgiving together. They had curbside pickup for their meals. They all went home, logged on to Zoom. We shared what we were most thankful for with each other. We played some bingo and had dessert together and it was just a great, great night. So with our challenges, we just, we just didn't want Girl Scouts to, to come to an end. We, we know that people were feeling stressed, leaders were feeling stressed. And we just didn't want the girls to feel like that we had given up on them. So really proud of our service unit leaders and our team. They're stepping up and doing all the extra, coming up with challenges every week. They're coming up with badge programs. We're really, really blessed here in Service Unit Forty-eight. And if there's anything that we can share with you, please reach out. We love to, to brainstorm ideas for the holidays coming up now. We're currently working on elf bags to, to step it up a notch after our boo bags. So the girls are, will be receiving elf bags. We're working on some holiday challenges. If anybody knows about the website Met About Patches, I saw an adorable patch. It's called the Kindness Elf. And we decided to create that into a challenge for the holiday month. So we're going to have different levels. So maybe the daisies and brownies might have to do four random acts of kindness and, and so on as the, the levels go up. And we're going to get them this patch. We think it's adorable. And the other thing for community service this month, we normally do a holiday fair at the local nursing home and unfortunately we're unable to go there this year. So we set up an adopt a senior program and our girls are each adopting a resident at the Bell Haven Nursing Home. So that they'll know, we didn't forget them this year. It would have been our twentieth year doing that holiday boutique. And unfortunately we can't be together with them this year. So we're, we're going to send them a special treat that way. Thank you for having me.
A lot of shout outs and we did have a request for your armpit fudge. So they
I will definitely share that with you. That was a real hit.
I think
There's a patch for it. There's a fun patch for it too. So you know, we love, we're patch stalkers here in Service Unit Forty-eight. We love our patches. So that's a cute patch.
Are there any other questions for Laura before we move on?
We did have someone else say they would love to know more about the virtual food drive and Friendsgiving.
Okay, so the, the virtual, the virtual food drive, we contacted the local pantry. We asked them for a list of items that they needed to fulfill their holiday boxes. And then we joined forces with our local legislator. He shared it out on his webpage and we've got it all over social media that on two consecutive weekends, these following locations are where we have our drop boxes. And we just kept sharing it and sharing it and having the girls make videos and share it on their parents' page and and that's how we did it. And then it's Friendsgiving. What we did with that was we, we created an event on Facebook and the people can sign up for our event. And once we knew how many we were shopping for and cooking for, we created the meal. We set up a bingo. We had a tote bag with all the meals in it. And that included their dessert, it included the bingo board. It included a placemat for them to color while we were chit chatting. It was a great event. We can't wait. And hopefully next year we could be together in person to do it and we'll have more than seventy girls.
So we have another question. The, we'd like to know a little more about the, is the elf bag like a regular boo bag, like candy? Or is it a one-time thing? How does it work?
So everything in the bag is going to be elf themed. So it's going to have an elf hat. It's going to have a Jingle Bell necklace. It's going to have an elf doll. And then we're creating elf candy bags because if you're a fan of the movie Elf, you know that there are four food groups according to Elf. So there's candy canes, candy corn, syrup and just plain candy. So we're making elf themed bags to go in there as well.
Okay, another question. Did the service unit pay for the food to be made at the restaurant?
So we came up with a price of eight dollars per girl and that included a patch and the meal and dessert.
Okay. Nothing else has come through at this time, but stay tuned. There could be more questions. But thank you so much. That sounded awesome.
Okay, thank you for having me.
Yeah, Laura, thank you. You're always so amazing. You have an amazing service unit. And I have to know that, I mean, most of it is because you have great people working with you and you are always our biggest champion. And we thank you for everything that you do for Girl Scouts of Suffolk County as a whole.
Thank you.
We have, I just wanted to let you guys know about the light show. So tonight is the last night that you can pre-order your Girl Scout special light show tickets and get the free patch. So it, the link is on our website. Hold on. Got a lot of things open. So the Smiths Point Light Show will be back again December first through December thirtieth. It's at Smiths Point County Park in Shirley. We have the great incentive that's going on that ends tonight. So from now to November seventeenth, Girl Scouts and their families can purchase an online ticket for twenty dollars. Plus they'll receive two free exclusive Smith Point Light Show patches. So that ends tonight. So if anybody hasn't been able to preorder their, their tickets yet, make sure that you do that. So you can take advantage of that deal with the, with the patches. We were told that they will be in probably either next week, probably the week after because of the holiday. So once the patches are, have arrived, we will contact you and let you know how to pick them up. Does anybody have any questions about the light show? I can tease, do you, do you want to see the thirty second video? Is that, is this going to be the thing that takes you over the, over the hump? I'll, I'll show it. I'll show.
Shining on the beautiful shores of Smith Point County Park in Shirley, New York, Girl Scouts of Suffolk County's Smith Point Light Show has been delighting families during the holiday season for more than a decade. This drive-through spectacle of glittering lights has become a holiday tradition for thousands of visitors. Proceed support girl programs and outreach services. Learn more at smithpointlightshow.com. Shining on the beautiful shores of Smith Point County Park in Shirley, New York, Girl Scouts of Suffolk County's Smith Point Light Show has been delighting families during the holiday season for more than a decade. This drive-through spectacle of glittering lights has become a holiday tradition for thousands of visitors. Proceed support girl programs and outreach services. Learn more at smithpointlightshow.com.
Sorry about that. YouTube just keeps playing. So you got to see it. You got to see it once here at another time. I know you're so excited. So that is the main part of our, our event tonight. We do have the questions that were pre-submitted. So I'm going to just pull those up right now and then we're just going to read the basics of the question and then we have our panelists to answer them. So just a little note, Adobe decided to update my system because I had downloaded on my site. So you wouldn't have to wait. So I'm just going to go in the back way. That's fine. Because we, we can pivot with the best of them at Girl Scouts of Suffolk County. Okay, so we have one question about setting up the like attending the Sebaco, using our indoor meeting space at Sebaco for longer than an hour specifically to asking about archery sessions and then the STEM Center.
So, yes, so the STEM Center is available. We are getting requests left and right. So because of that space limitation, we can't give anyone longer than an hour because we want to accommodate as many troops as possible. As far as an archery program, because trips are not, well, I'll just say first, it's getting very cold. So archery doesn't normally for girl, in Girl Scout land, it normally doesn't go into November or beyond. But also at this point, trips are not approved, an approved activity at this point. So yes, there is space in the STEM Center for use for troops. But archery and trips and more than an hour long time slot is not available at this time.
We have another question about would we able, would we be able to sponsor more outdoor hiking or nature events? Virtual classes for badges are great too. Our, our girls want to meet other cadets. Zoom would be great to do this.
Okay, so I thought about this question because I wasn't sure if I had a question to this question. So we do have virtual journeys. We do have virtual programs for all levels and will continue to do so. We also have some free resources of other programs. So those are all available. But my question was when the person said, do we want to, they, their cadets want to meet other cadets? Would it be more helpful for us to maybe set up, you know, cadet level meet and greets with a certain number of girls or, you know, other level meet and greets? I don't know if that's something that people are looking for. Because if that seems like something that's appealing to people, we can certainly set that up and, you know, limit the number of participants and maybe have a topic for them to discuss. So they're not just all staring at each other. But if that's something people are interested in, that's certainly, you know, we could look to set something like that up.
Our next question asks, is there anything being done specifically to make girls of color, black, brown, et cetera, feel more welcome in Suffolk County Girl Scout community? Has any work been done to target leaders of color and encourage them to join the Girl Scouts of Suffolk County?
Okay, so I'm going to take this question and thank you for asking it. We are in the initial stages of forming a focus group to find ways to make sure that our girls all feel welcome. And, you know, figure out what we could do more in that area. So we will be reaching out to not only our volunteers, our service unit coordinators and, and organizations outside of Girl Scouts to work with us so that we can reach communities where girls of color may feel, but they don't necessarily feel welcome in Girl Scouts and how we can make those changes. One of the other things that we're looking at is introducing trainings and workshops around diversity and inclusiveness. So that all girls can learn about how to be inclusive and how we can all learn to work together. So more information will come on that soon, but we are definitely working on that because we know that is a space where we need to expand. Thank you.
Okay, our next question is about, when are the patches for the virtual, the fall virtual event going to be available? And then how do we contact the cupboard to do a catch up order, which Kelly spoke about already?
The virtual patches are in-house. We, they just have to be sorted and the attendees have to be contacted. So I believe they'll start being contacted by early next week.
And then Kelly also talked about what we're going to do to help out independents who want to do the opt-out program. This is a question about outdoor field trips and why they're not allowed. And specifically, her girls are working on their silver award and the current restrictions are, are making it very difficult.
So, so per GS USA and our local council, our Girl Scouts of Suffolk County also agree that we made a decision to abide by the strictest COVID restrictions that there were. So with that being said, you know, we followed all the guidelines to a T and then some. You know, we've had a lot of cases popping up, a lot of schools shutting down, a lot of schools preparing to shut down. So we're, we're happy with our decision because we feel like we've done everything we can to keep the girls safe and accommodate them at the same time. But because of that, we haven't, as a Girl Scout activity, you know, allowed field trips at this time.
And then the last question just says, is there any way for a holiday, to holiday shop for my daughter in the store or is it all online? So for this one, yes, we, we are, we have to do everything curbside at this point. So what we came up with though, we can, the same way we're doing this kind of webinar, we can do Zoom calls with you. So both Anne and Maria have their own Zoom accounts. So if you'd like to see what's in the store and kind of have someone just kind of walk you through what's available, we can do the, do it that way. We can show you around the store. We can hold up the things for you to see. We're just trying to be mindful of, you know, all of the restrictions that are out there. But we don't want it to, you know, dampen the holiday spirit. So if you're interested in doing something with, you know, a virtual kind of shopping experience, you can email either Anne or Maria. We're going to have more information available in, on the website as we kind of finalize it. We're going to create a form around it. So if you, but if you are interested in something like that, just let us know.
Jenna, in the comments, it says someone wants to know if they, if we can make Anne and Maria try things on.
I think it's a great idea, right? Both here, you know, they're fabulous women. They don't mind. Oh yeah. So we're, you know, we're trying to be creative in this, you know, it's not always easy. But we do want to do what we can to help you. Are there any other ones in the? Yeah, I think there's a question about the, yeah, because it's
Yes, so there are. So one thing I do want to say, recently the restriction for private residences, indoor and outdoor has been restricted to ten people, as many of you I'm sure are aware. We are anticipating that this is going to spread to other organizations and meetings and things like that. So we are mentally trying to prepare for the idea that we can only allow groups of ten. We're not there yet. So right now it is able to have indoor meetings of up to twenty-six people with the appropriate amount of space for social distancing and obviously wearing masks and things like that. But there are no field trips, period, whether they are outdoor or indoor. Now, that is to say, if you want to do something with your family as a family, that's, that's a different situation. But this is leaders taking girls on a trip. So, so just to clarify, you know, the difference of that. You know, we've had people that wanted to do things. I mean, as individuals, you can do whatever you want. But just as a Girl Scout troop, as a Girl Scout field But just as a Girl Scout troop, as a Girl Scout field trip, that's not permitted at this time.
Okay, are there any other questions? I'll just give you a minute for that. Um, we don't, I don't, so last, if you were here for our last town hall, you got to see um, that we had gifts, that we had a, like a raffle for gifts. So today I don't have them with me because I wasn't able to get into the, oh, but Maria has just let me know what they are. So Maria, I actually, I'm going to unmute you so you can let people know.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for attending our virtual town hall. Um, we have three raffles that we're going to uh, give away today. So the first is a plush Girl Scout throw blanket. And let me draw a name for that. That one is going to Jessica Guadagnino. I hope I pronounced your last name correctly, Jessica. And our second raffle prize is a Girl Scout plate and a reflective lanyard. And the winner of that one is Kathy G. And then our final raffle is a Girl Scout mug with a pen and a lanyard as well. And that one goes to Maura Charles.
And actually, Maura had another question too, so it's perfect.
Okay. So, so for a virtual uh, program, you can either pick up in Bayport, Comac or Riverhead. Um, so they will contact you. You'll let them know which is your preferred location and then they will have the material sent out to that particular location.
And actually we'll do the same thing for the people who just won the prizes.
Um, we have another question for meetings at the leader's home. Um. But we did, there was concern about parents concerned with evening meetings and safety at local parks. Um, so as far as meeting in the home, Jackie, I don't know if you want to take that one?
Sure. Um, at this, at this point, at this juncture, we're not allowing meetings in the home um, or any private residence. Beyond COVID, I, I am unsure of how we're going to handle that. I know um, that it has become a concern, a liability concern um, for the council to have meetings in the home. But again, these are all things that, you know, once we can find our way through COVID, uh, that we can address, you know, at a later time. But as far as evening meetings and safety at local parks, I understand that completely. Um, so that's why we are at this point allowing indoor meetings. So hopefully we can help you find space. If you can't find space um, at either one of our locations or if you're not close enough, please reach out to your membership specialist and they can help you uh, try to find locations in your area uh, for you. So you can have meetings with your girls and, and feel safe and secure with them.
And then Jessica just had a follow-up question about expanding the days and hours for the indoor meetings. Um.
So we, we have been expanding slowly but surely. Um, I think part of our difficulty is where we do have limited staff who are separated into two different cohorts and um, and they have to work around a cleaning schedule and the holiday light show. And so we've, we've had a little difficulty and right now there are no staff scheduled full-time at Sebago. So we're, we're working on remedying that because we have had a probably more requests for that than anything. Um, so, so we are looking to expand. My suggestion would be to put in your request, whatever it is. Um, put in the notes section if it's not an available thing for you to select, to put it in the notes section, what you, what it is that you're looking for. And at least that allows us to look into it and see what we can accommodate. I don't see any other questions popping up.
I think that's it. Um, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight.
For joining us.
Uh, if you have any other questions, you can email us. You can email us at um, customer care. Um, thank you to all the panelists for um, speaking tonight. Um, if you have any, if there's anything else you guys need, please let us know. We have our next virtual town hall meeting on December fifteenth. So that is good, uh, you're going to, we're going to, we're making a special space on our website, uh, for you to be able to see the, the town halls. They're going to, we have the past recordings available on those town halls as well. Um, so if you have any questions, please let us know. Thank you for joining us.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. All right, take care. Have a great night.